Agenda. We need to add.
Which one, Joy?
Um.
Number three?
Send agenda number three, yes.
Okay.
There's. Awesome policies.
I told Joy this is the record for three, but that's because in Joy's defense, some of this stuff is handwritten, it's not a hundred percent where it needs to be because we've been throwing all this stuff recently and just trying to get everything legislatively updated and we've been getting updates that are in real time, so just FYI.
So, um, number thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six, we need to add, um, policy codes number one oh six point one, E two, and E three. Alright.
Make a motion to. Approved. It's the added.
Second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ours, motion carries. Alright, thank you. Minutes approval, next, the July twelfth regular meeting.
Have to prove the minutes from July twelfth meeting.
One second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ours, motion carries. Alright, next, public forum. Alright, welcome, welcome.
It was a joke last year because when I would see weekly, I would always call her señora, and then she became a counselor, and then I she got on me, I couldn't call her señora anymore, but I still tease her on that. But they did have an Ecuador trip
I saw.
that they were eventually able to take, and it was over the summer. And, uh, one night I was at the softball game up here and I saw as we went there, and then come to find out later, she grabbed Katie and then they took off the next, did you go that night or the next?
Yeah.
Yeah, they left, right? Matter of fact, did you not play in the second game? Was that what it was? Yeah, so after the first game, they took off and headed to the airport, right?
Yep.
Wow.
Well, we went, stayed in a hotel, and then the next day, but yeah.
Anyway, this little backstory is kind of funny, I'm like, this weekly's here. Oh yeah, she's taking Katie. Down the road. So anyway, thanks for coming tonight, and tell us about your trip and your adventures. We're excited to hear about it.
I'll talk to mom.
Alright.
Alright, so, um, you've got photos from our trip. I'm not gonna try to present over the technology, I don't want to mess anything up, but you have three slides of photos from our trip, so I think when I came and presented initially, I think our destination was Puerto Rico when I came and presented the first time. Well, there was not another, not another school that wanted to go to Puerto Rico, so that was gonna like triple the cost of our trip if we wanted to go alone, so we ended up, um, joining up with another school who was going to Ecuador, and, um, it completely came full circle because that's where we were supposed to go in twenty twenty, and Abby's older sister fundraised for that trip, and then she got to use some of that leftover fundraising money from twenty twenty and make it all happen, so, um, they're each gonna share just a little bit about their favorite part, what they got out of our trip, um, just in terms of the photos, you can see that it was, it was an amazing experience, um, I made sure to include our host family photos on there on the third slide, um, that's the reason why I take students to travel, and the reason why I encourage, um, every Spanish teacher I know or language teacher I know to use ExperiTas, the company that we use, because they are just out of this world about using Spanish, teaching the kids Spanish, and creating special immersive experiences for these kids, and I just could not be prouder of the four kids that I got to spend ten days with. They represented our school and community so well, um, and not every kid has the confidence to drop themselves in a country in South America and try and use their Spanish skills after only three years of learning Spanish, right? Um, so they just did a great job. So Katie, you want to kick us off?
Uh, yeah, so I'm gonna talk about the family stay. Um, so we, I think we stayed in a hotel for two nights, and then we met our families, and I think we all got pretty lucky with the families that we got. Abby and I were together, and Ben and Mark were together. And it seemed like they were all kind of one big family in general. The other group we went with was from Wisconsin, and we made friends with them, and Abby and I ended up being in apartment with the other group. And it was all one giant family, so we had family dinners together. We celebrated my birthday there too, and they treated us as if we were their own family, which is really nice. And our families were also close with Mark and Ben's parents, which to me, I think their parents were really well with them. They have any kids of their own, so Ben, Mark, and Ben all to themselves, and it really fit their personalities, which was really weird. Um, so, together as families, we got to play soccer. Um, our families also played basketball at court a couple blocks away, which is really nice, and just, I know with mine and Abby's family, they were just super nice, they were patient with our language ability. There'd be times where we were like, uh, what? Um, tried to use Spanish as much as we could, but they also helped with English as well, which was really helpful. The food that they cooked was just amazing, and they even let us help sometimes, which I don't know if we did a good job or not. Um, which was really fun, and just the joint, how some of the families were just joined together and friends of family friends or whatever, they, it made it feel very homey there. And I don't think, I think because we were all there at the same time, but I didn't get homesick once because the family stay made it so comforting, and they just cared about us. We talked with our host sisters, host brothers, they took us out to museums and everything, we got to see the culture a bit. And just having to, like, to know that we have an extra family in another country is really special. To me, especially being bonds with the younger siblings and just going out. I remember we had a little host sister, and she would, she held my hand when we went out, and she made me count to a hundred in Spanish. And so I'm like, okay, I'm gonna make you count to a hundred in English. And it was, it was really fun, and the, we were just really lucky. We got families that really cared about us and just made us feel welcome in their country.
I'm gonna talk about Mendo, which was our last place we stayed at for like two days. Um, Katie and I were the only two healthy people at the time. They all got sick sadly.
Me the worst of all.
Yes, sadly, our very last two days.
Mark and I the worst of all.
Argue.
Um, and so we started off by going zip lining. Um, Mendo is just like a huge rainforest. There's trees everywhere, huge mountains, um, we didn't we did, we stayed at a hotel, it was more of just like a fun time. The rest of it was museums and learning about culture and stuff. We went zip lining, as I said, that was a highlight, I would say, for all of us. And, let's see, that night, we had dinner, and then we went on a frog tour. We rode in the back of trucks around this small little town to get to this area, and it's like pitch black, and you have flashlights, and you're just looking for these little exotic frogs. And we did that for like an hour or so. Yeah, interesting. We met families also from the United States while we were doing that, which is so random, this little town in the middle of nowhere. And then the next morning, what did we do that? Oh, we went to, we went on this hike to Waterfalls. Um, and so we rode this little, what do you call it, like, con... across this huge valley. It was beautiful, very breathtaking. And then we did a super hard hike, which everyone was dying on, and it was super humid. And, but it was super fun and beautiful and a great experience. We also went swimming, there was a pool at our hotel. Um, we loved that. It was right outside of our house. The hotel had little houses for everybody. That was nice, it was very nice. Um, but Mendo, it was a smaller town than we were used to. It was very cute, a lot of culture, a lot of nice people.
My turn?
You guys share how bargaining for the projects. Yeah.
Yeah, my favorite part was, uh, going to the markets and like bargaining in Spanish because there's no like set prices, so they say like twenty, and I'll say like five dollars. They cut them a lot. I had them a hard time because I want the best deal. But besides that, my favorite parts were just like the activities we did, like I've never been in the mountains before, we were up like thirteen thousand feet in there. Like, we took like, what is it, the skylift up to the top?
Yeah.
And you could just see like for miles and miles, you can see the whole scene, you know, it was like huge. Just the sights we saw and the things we did.
Beautiful.
Something I'll never forget.
There is a time when we were bargaining, and the lady was like, it's ten bucks. I was like, I only have a five. Okay.
Hey, it's changed.
Say, I'm a business guy.
Uh, I think the trip, uh, as a whole was a really great experience, uh, for all of us, you know, I don't think we'll have an opportunity like that again in our life, uh, to see, you know, how other people in the world are living, uh,
It was a culture shock.
Yeah, exactly. It was a major culture shock. Uh, and it's just really interesting, uh, you know, to go out and see some people really are less fortunate, and that there's a whole nother side of the world that, you know, we haven't really seen.
Also makes you a lot more appreciative of what we have here.
Yeah, exactly.
That's like, our shower, he broke our shower.
Got fixed, okay.
It was like, it was like lukewarm, not even cool on the cold side, but now I like cold showers, so.
We didn't shower at night because there were water, like, they had certain times and amount of water, so we did like what we call camping showers. We like do everything and rinse off.
And then turn the water off. Chip to, turn the water off.
Yeah.
And, yeah. It was definitely different. You can't shower with the, when the people above us showered.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, it would turn off completely.
You have to have like a schedule for the apartment and, yeah.
I didn't know all that, that's. Um, me on the other hand, I stayed with the nicest old couple in this world. They had an ultra-modern apartment constructed by their son, and I'll tell you what, after I stayed, where I stayed in Costa Rica the last trip that I took, I was like this, this is just, I deserve this. Because I, I too had the fun shower experience in the toilet that wouldn't flush, but, um, no, Ecuador was just.
You just flush toilet paper down.
That's, that's true. Um, but anyway, another wonderful part of ExperiTas is they have you do a service project, so um, our kids spent a morning at a soup kitchen for the elderly, um, in Quito, and really, I mean, we peeled a few, a couple of us peeled potatoes, but really, the rest of them were just entertaining all of the people that were about to be served lunch, so if you if you can imagine, the beefs were just dancing for an hour and a half, the cha-cha slide, um, I mean, Ben and Katie high-fived every person there seventy-five times, like, and they were just, they were just awesome, and and really, you know, again, that's why the company we traveled through is so amazing, but, yeah.
I think the hanging out with like the grandparents was also another favorite, just because they're so sweet and little.
Literally compared to us.
Yeah.
They were tall.
Yes.
Very tall.
Yeah, and some of them were a little intimidated by us, especially Ben, because he's like six foot. But just hearing their stories and like, we danced with them, like I know Abby peeled potatoes as well. We played games, and we played this game where you had to stand up and sing a song, and some of them there was no idea what song they were singing, so that I sang, um, Party in the USA, and some of them were clapping and everything, and just dancing around, like, some of them wanted to stay in their seats, and one of us would go up, bring them up, and we'd dance around with them. And it was, we did the cha-cha slide and, um,
Cha night joke.
Cha night joke.
I have a video of it, right?
Which they got to take over this.
Yes, there is, I have one.
They loved.
Anyway, thank you so much for having my students, um, oh, that's, that's what, what they all bargained for.
Yeah.
So, uh, they, they found, the gentlemen of our group found that there were some, some character, uh, ponchos, and then tell them about the the mask that, they all have one of these.
So we all got these for our dads. Um, it's the Diablo Uma mask, so basically what they're telling us is, in each tribe, there'd be a leader or like the chief, and they would wear that mask, and that's how you know that that was the chief or the leader of the whole tribe.
So that was the fun, is they all got to go see who could get the best price for the Diablo Uma mask at all the different stands, so, yeah.
I definitely got the best price for this.
Yes, you did.
Twenty bucks for it, maybe?
Yeah.
Mine was quite fancy, well, it's very. Let me see the, the design.
It's, it's from a show that we both like to watch.
Oh, that looks like. Okay, wow.
They had all of them, Paw Patrol, anything you could imagine.
Oh my gosh, you're kidding me. Paw Patrol was only in kid sizes, otherwise.
Katie was looking for one, and then I got.
Mine's the only one that has fur, so mine's like.
It's the best. Yes, it is, Mark. Alright, well.
Thank you for sharing. You're the best.
Thank you for coming, heck yes.
Can I get a picture, because I think you did a picture of everyone when they laughed.
Thank you. This is a once in a lifetime opportunity.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, killing two birds with one stone, gonna do a little bit of my school counselor data, so, like I said, you have slides, um, that you can follow along with, so, um, if, if you want me to, I'll come every year and present my data, but I think the main reason that I'm here is at one point this year, Lana approached me with like the updating the job description of the junior high school counseling position.
Right.
I'll tell you what, when I read through the list, it was extremely dated, an extremely dated description of what I do. And come to think of it, like, I think when I started out teaching Spanish, I can't say that I could tell you what a school counselor did. Um, I can't tell you what my experience with the school counselor in my high school or junior high was, other than I don't know. Right? Um, and so, I think it's very important for you all to understand what I do every day, so that's why I'm here. Um, because school counseling has changed so much in the last five to ten years, I mean, it's, it's just completely different than from what it was, when, even when I was in high school, um, so the first thing that you're gonna realize is I'm not gonna use the G word in this presentation. Anybody know the G word I'm talking about?
Guidance.
Guidance.
Guidance, okay. So, that is a word that is no longer really relevant to describe a school counselor's position, so, probably what all of us experienced, I, I think it was transitioning when I was in high school a little bit, but, um, the guidance counselor was really the person that was leading students into their post-secondary options, typically trade type of work, um, things like that, and the reason why we've moved to calling ourselves school counselors is because we have a lot of realms of what we do now, and it's not just essentially funneling students into their trade work or their college or wherever they were going. Um, you know, in the sixty, seventies, and eighties is when that was most prominent, um, and that was actually a different role, so, um, what a school counselor's role is, is to work in three domains, okay? So your three domains are your social emotional realm, college and career readiness, and academics. So, um, like I, I like to say, I have those three domains, and I present them in three ways, so small group, individual, and large group counseling lessons. Um, so, the American School Counselor Association is what kind of the governing body of school counselors that describes what our role is, what we do, provides us with standards, that kind of thing, so, um, if you go to the slide that says individual counseling, I'll tell you what, my master's program really made me drive home that data-driven aspect of my job. There is a spreadsheet that documents how I spent every minute of my day last year. That is real, to the fifteen-minute increment. I'll tell you what, there was some three forty-fives where I'm like, bleh, what did I do at eight AM? And I think that's why it's so important to track your data and how you're spending your time, because if you are not tied to that everyday bell schedule, there's somebody that snags you in the hallway, and you're like, thirty minutes later, I had something I was supposed to be doing right now. So I think it, it really held me accountable, um, in my first year as a school counselor, so a hundred and eight one-on-one interventions with our at-risk students, so, um, I didn't really have those identified, those kids identified um, as a, a first-year school counselor, but they identified themselves very quickly, so mostly that was me working on academics with them, missing work, study skills, that kind of thing, so those kiddos, I, sometimes I felt like they would be walking down the hallway, same hallway as me, and they would like pop in a, in a doorway, because they're like, oh! But really, I, some of them, you know, became the kids that were, I was their person here at Wilton, you know, and I think I still still will be even when they go into high school, because junior high, seventh and eighth grade is I think the most vulnerable two years in our schools. Um, the transition up here, I will tell you, like, I was shocked, the things that I heard in my office this year. I never thought that it was gonna be as deep and dark as it was with some kids, and it really was, I mean, it was I, I learned so much about myself last year, um, and just the immense need, even in a small town like ours, I mean, it's it's just the mental health of our students is so important. Um, so, yeah, four hundred and seventy kids self-referred themselves to me, and if you divide that by the number of days of school, I was busy, um, and you know, I, I wouldn't even say I had a lot of frequent flyers, it was just, you know, a lot of kids, and I was like, man, I wish I would have recorded what I said on those first couple days of school, because they heard something. They heard, she's the one to go to, I guess, um, and I had, you know, there's nothing more gratifying in your career than when a seventh-grade boy refers themselves to you and comes and tells you about their problems, and and then follows up and says you helped fix them. I mean, that, that's just everything. That was everything this year. Um, group counseling, that was something that I, I'm like, what's that? School counselors do this? You know, when I was in my master's program, but again, to bond kids over a common topic, um, I had a group that met on depression, and, you know, that's a that's a tough topic for junior high, but they, they were the ones that stepped up and said, yeah, I want to be in the depression group, and I want to come talk about this, and you know, groups of kids that maybe never interact, and in the same room talking about, I mean, that's just building social skills, and and it was just amazing, and especially the friendship group, you know, to have some of your quote-unquote popular kids and your less popular kids in a room talking about healthy friendship boundaries, I mean, come on, it, it was awesome. Um, and then I've got a list of all of my large group lessons that I conducted, um, the topics extremely vast, um, kind of just, you know, going off my counseling standards, but also trying to see what needs, I, I sent out a needs assessment to parents to say, hey, what's you know, what do you see as the most pressing issues, um, with your seventh and eighth graders? I got to help eighth graders do their four-year plans and learned a lot through that experience, um, I've, I said through the fourth quarter of this last year that my goal for this year is parent outreach. Um, we did a seventh-grade spring orientation with parents this year that so helpful, I think. I mean, when it's their first kid coming through the junior high, they don't know, how, you know, how do you find things out, and, um, so I think that was really helpful, and I'm hoping we're gonna have a lot less tears in the first week of school from our seventh graders, and that was, I tried to get down in the sixth grade as much as possible, because I said to myself, there is not gonna be a crime child whose name I don't know on the first day of school, because that was, oh, I will never forget, like, they're just sobbing uncontrollably, and I bring them to my office, and the first thing I have to ask is, what's your name? Not gonna happen this year, I, I got all those sixth graders down, um, but I included some of the pictures of some of the career exploration experiences that we had this year, so, um, I took a big group of kids over to John Deere and toured Davenport Works, super cool. There was a day where I was like, maybe I should be driving a forklift for a living, this looks like so much fun, um, but I was, I was totally nerding out, and the kids were like, calm down, this weekly. And I'm like, okay, well, I just think it's so cool, um, and so they got to learn a lot, their, their presentation there was just awesome. Um, the bright neon yellow shirts are from a Build My Future event that they did for the first time in Iowa City this year, super cool, hands-on, um, trade work, you can see Ben Harkness, I think, like, getting ready to lay some tile or something. Um, so that was super cool. Um, we also had a little kind of transportation career-oriented day here, so, um, you'll see Gerald Stramberg driving a driving a truck simulator, and then, um, you know, our, our transportation department was there teaching him how to take a tire on and off, and teaching him about the bus engine, and I said, hello, welcome, welcome to teaching every kid how to change a tire, because that's what we're gonna do next year, um, so uh, that was really cool, and all the junior high kids went to that, so whether they're interested in it or not, that's just a life skill. Um, so, looking forward to this next year, um, we've got what I think are a lot of positive changes coming down the pike in junior high. My one and only goal, uh, from this past year was to get the junior high study hall under control, um, I could go into details on that, but I won't. Our, our junior high kids were sitting for a lot of the day. Um, a lot, and when you give junior high kids unstructured time, that is not good, um, and so, you know, there's a lot of reasons the master's schedule, no one is trained on how to do that, not even me, believe it or not, um, it's just everybody taking a crack at it with all the brain power they can, but for some reason, it ended with a lot of kids sitting in study hall, um, and so, we've fixed that, a lot of moving parts, a lot of, you know, random epiphanies while you're driving to work, and I think we're, we're gonna have a lot of positive things going on. We're implementing a flex time every other day at the end of the day, um, there was one point in time, one data pull day this year, where we had two hundred and ninety-nine of our students, seven twelve with missing assignments. At least one. So to me, like, that's, that's just not teaching our kids that it's important to turn the work we assign into them. Um, but, you know, junior high level, we have over fifty percent of the kids with missing work, and they have all this study hall, I'm like, something doesn't make sense. Um, and so, we're gonna have structured time where they're actually requested to the teacher for whom they have missing work, and that teacher is gonna have that one-on-one time with them, and then there's just gonna be little incentives and rewards flying to every kid who has their missing work turned in, I mean, literally, you, you can give them a sticker and that makes their day, so, that's my goal, is to really you know, encourage those students, and we're gonna have, you know, career guest speakers and things for those students that have all their work done, you know, using that extra time, enrichment time, kind of, in a positive way. Um, and like I said, I, I just think that parent outreach is so important, um, I, like I said, I'm surprised that when I get up in a group in front of a group of parents, they listen to me and trust the things that I say, but, you know, I, I think I, I'm really excited to work with Sarah Eiselstein in the elementary, you know, I'm imagining just, you know, technology safety nights with parents, I don't know if any of them will come, but hey, if, you know, we can bring people in to hear information, I think if I've learned anything in becoming a parent over the last few months, it's that you're just, we're just making it up as we go along, you know? And if we can find some, some research and some information and people to share, um, with our parents, I think that'll be very important, so there you go, now you know a little bit about what my last year was, so thank you, guys.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the first we've had a counselor on the junior high for a number of years ago, when we went through our downsizing.
Yep.
That was one of the positions unfortunately that went away, so when she came in, it was nice to have someone with Kate's enthusiasm and
Right.
go-getter mentality of like, hey, this way it needs to be done, so kudos to her and Mr. Donald too, because I know she worked full suit in this weekly and.
That being said, is there, did you find any restrictions or anything that's limited you from being able to do what you want to do with the role that we can help with?
Um, no, I don't think so. Um, I just, I just think that it's, again, I just wanted you all to know, like, how how big of a need it is in seventh and eighth grade, like, oh my goodness, they're just, they're, they're just so vulnerable and don't know what's going on, and, and again, like, to have someone who they feel like is in their corner at school, because I just think there's so much going on unbeknownst to their parents. I mean, I, I had some really, really tough phone calls this school year of you know, things that are happening on their devices that, you know, they'll come show me, and it's just oof. So, again, I, I've got, I've got my first lessons at the beginning of the year that I did not have at the beginning of the year last year, ready to roll, because you know, that transition from elementary to junior high, I think just from sixth to seventh grade, I don't know, I don't know if all other schools have that transition, but I just think it's a, it's a weird, weird time where I, I've been, I'm down in fifth and sixth grade all the time with the L L kids, so I know what the expectations are like, so I'm definitely just trying to figure out what that, what that transition is and why it is so hard for them, so.
It's a lot of independence when you go from the elementary, you've had a lot of structure.
Walking in a line.
Well, and fast schedule changes, and you got junior high sports, and, you know, activities.
I was a changeover from junior high to high school.
How was the changeover from junior high to high school? Do the students go through the same type of things? I guess what I'm getting at, you are doing some amazing things here and it looks awesome. Are these carrying on to the high school? Are they carrying on to the elementary? Is there a good group working together to continue this, what you're doing well?
Yeah, um, I mean, like I said, I'm really excited to start working with Sarah Eiselstein, um, this next year. I mean, I mentored under Dory and what I told her is, I'm like, well, you know, like, right when I started to get in the trenches to start collaborating with her, then I knew that she was transitioning out of her role. So, um, as far as with eighth graders, their lessons throughout their fourth quarter were all ninth grade transition-based lessons. Um, two years ago, when I was a Spanish teacher slash counseling intern, I like to put that year behind me because it was rough. Um, but I did counseling groups, um, with ninth graders. So I did, I did kind of those ninth grade transition lessons because that's where we, I mean, every high schooler says, yeah, my GPA dropped off a cliff, my ninth grade year, and then I brought it back up. Um, so that's something that I, I know we've talked about that. I, I don't know if that becoming a skinny, like some sort of, um, transition. But yeah, I would really, um, I, I really think, you know, the large group lessons at the high school level are important and something that needs to be implemented that I don't think are there right now. But yeah, I, I mean.
No, it just seems like you have a lot of great, great things going on right here. We just need to continue it on.
Keep going.
But, so thank you for all this.
Yeah, thanks.
Are you familiar with that to Minds Group at all?
No.
Awesome. You'll link to it.
That'd be great.
It's, it's born on college campuses, but they're expanding. It's just youth-led kind of support type stuff, so.
Yeah.
What's it called?
Active Minds.
Okay, good.
And I do think a lot of, um, our students too, kind of, I, I guess it kind of goes right along with my role as the, as a school counselor. But I don't know if you've heard of the Difference Maker Crew, but it's a new student organization run by myself and Ms. Bruno that's literally just the nice people club. It's a, it's a kindness club at the high school level. Um, but kind of think student council, but not elected at all, doesn't necessarily have to be that standout leader, um, type of kid. And I've, they've been doing peer tutoring for me every Wednesday. Um, so I, I think really I've, I've been enlisting my, my students for help to, you know, be those, those leaders in the academic realm. Because, you know, most eleventh and twelfth graders can help us facilitate the ninth grader get through those transitions. It's just, uh, yeah, but.
I think it would be really nice to have something going from that eighth grade to ninth grade year because Briggs really struggled last year. And he said, he just thought, I said, I did not think this was gonna be so much, right? It wasn't like, you know, this, you know, you couldn't pick something out. I think it was just everything, the sports and the homework and the, you know, the friends. And you still are on that well. These friends aren't quite as mature as these friends. And, you know, everybody's trying to find their place while they're trying to, you know, get into a routine of something that they were not expecting. So I think a little bit of, you know, hey guys, this is kind of a warning. This is what this looks like, you know, so that they have a little better idea. And not that he was, you know, naive to it in any way, but, you know, I definitely think seeing my girls go through it was way different than seeing him go through it, which I assume you'd expect, but.
Yeah, and you know, that's last year's ninth graders, I always, I call them my unknown class because they're, when I transitioned from high school to junior high, they're the kids I never got to know. But just, I, I had a lot of ninth graders in my office this year, just kind of. And, and I had to do the hi, what's your name? And, and they're, they were, you know, just kind of floundering, a lot of them and the friends and, yeah. And I, I, I don't know necessarily if the, I don't know, I, I think the expectations are harder, um, in terms of, you know, I think, I think they get a lot more reminders in seventh and eighth grade about, and a lot more work time and odd projects and things like that. But I agree, that's, that's another transition where I think a lot of kids don't know how hard it's gonna be and then are doing that, look back and saying, I wish I would have this, you know? But maybe it's skills that we need to continue to, to build in them, but yeah.
I think as a parent too, I just felt helpless because I'm like, you have to tell me, you know, obviously he's not a huge stalker. You have to tell him what you need. You have to tell me, you know, like, you know, as a parent, you want, you want everything to be better. But it's something that he had to do on his own. And so kind of, you know, I think that where the parent thing comes in too, when they're transitioning from that sixth to seventh and then the eighth to ninth is, you know, you're starting to let them have those freedoms and make those decisions on their own. And it's like, you're in high school now, and I hate to say that, well, you're in high school now, so you gotta figure it out. But it's kind of a sink or swim feeling.
I think some of them don't want a problem solved. They just want something to talk about.
Yes.
It's like, yeah, I'm not gonna solve your problem, but you can unload on it. That's fun.
Yeah.
That's, that's really what they're looking for. It's just, I, my son never wanted me to help solve a problem. He just wanted to tell me how crappy things were and he didn't.
And I, I kind of got that. It's right. I agree. I agree. It's just, it's just a helpless.
But I say, but she, I mean, she can be their sounding board and she's got others set up that can be a sound.
Sometimes when you say it out loud, it feels better, so. It's great that they know that there's someone. Every student needs someone. So that's great that you can fulfill that. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give up the great work?
Yes. All right, Mr. Crawford, you get to follow that.
I don't know how I could.
I'll come.
I would, uh, like to start off by saying, everything is one hundred percent complete. What I would like to say.
How about you're gonna tell us?
However, we do have a very nice new parking lot out back that was completed, uh, just last week. Uh, I believe Gips or Triple B, sorry, uh, should be here just to do a little backfilling. And, uh, I'm meeting with, uh, a parking lot painting company to see about, getting ideas about how we want to set it up, uh, to get people in and out and hopefully not be more of a cluster, uh, than, than before, right? So, uh, I'll be meeting with them next week. And I was supposed to meet with them this week for the L complications. Um, the next thing, uh, would be getting lights out on the parking lot. Um, so as soon as Triple B is done doing their thing, I'll get ahold of, uh, electrician and also Wilton Municipal, uh, to set the light poles and we'll get some lights out there too. Cause it is pretty dark out there, so. Um, and we also have the, the small piece out here by the cafeteria completed. Uh, kind of filled it all in together. Uh, I think that was just kind of a nice addition to have, right? Kind of makes it make sense, I guess, to you. Um, we had, uh, the lines painted in the high school parking lot this summer. I think, uh, I think they look really nice. Uh, we kind of brightened it up a little bit and, uh, you can kind of see what's going on with our organization again. Um, so our new science room project has been rolling on for quite some time. Uh, we are getting close to completing this. We, uh, started out by doing tearing out walls, building walls, replacing flooring and replacing the ceiling, replacing the lights, just installed cabinets today. Unfortunately, uh, we also installed the plumbing, so the drain line and to get the water to it. Uh, unfortunately, the demo table that we had, that we have, doesn't quite work for the way that we need to get the water out. So little setback, uh, I think Sue had talked to the company about getting the new stuff on order. And I think it was early September that we're expecting it. So we might not be able to get class rolling right away with whatever water situations that he has to do. I don't know what.
We have a, we have a distiller.
So we're, we're rolling on that. Um, I know Justin and Beau and them, they're, they're about done with their, their part with it too. We also had the electrical ran in there as well. Uh, been, been keeping me busy. Trying, trying to work on that room has been real, real fun this summer. Uh, we also had, uh, poured floors in the rest of the junior high, other than right here in the small section when you walk in. Um, I think they look really good. Uh, diamond flooring, I believe is the company that did it. Uh, newer local, uh, company that I think they did just as good as, uh, the companies that we've had before. I think it looks really good.
It does.
Um, can't hardly tell the difference, you know, and that's kind of what I was looking for, so. Nice to have those floors completed. Um, so our HVAC project has had a few hiccups here lately. Uh, so we were originally told that the units would be, uh, arriving here July third. July third turned into two weeks after that, two weeks after that turned into August thirty-first. So now we are currently sitting and waiting for those units to be delivered to us. And what I've been told is three of them are complete, three of them are waiting on wiring harnesses. And they cannot ship those and have them installed here because then it basically voids warranty. So I'm really hoping sometime around the end of August, they will be here. I will get the crane and everything. Hopefully we'll get everything done up on top, you know, and try not to disturb classes as much as possible. Uh, if there's anything inside, we'll just have to work around the class schedule, so. Unfort, unfortunate news, but it, there's nothing I, I can do about it, you know?
That happens.
Everything's ready to go. Just waiting on them to get their units.
We have one more hole to cut from one of the units and that is going to be done this next week. The reason for the delay in that is one of the units had to be moved a little bit and, and the existing unit that's up there. So it was just in the way, had to do a little change order and, uh, yes, so we'll, we'll get that cut in next week. And all of that stuff, welding and all the supporting, everything we had to do is gonna be done. And we can get the ceiling. So the rest of the classrooms all have the new ceiling. All the tiles are in, all the new lights are in. Yeah, I ended up doing new lights with everything that we did, which I think is needed. And they, and they look, I think, way better. I mean, they glow better.
Those are all pretty neat.
Yep. Yes, they are. So HVAC project, little hiccup, but we'll, we'll get through it. And new lights in junior high. Uh, we are doing, so we did have a mini split unit that was up above Brittany Glass's room, uh, right here in the north side of the junior high. Uh, we're actually moving that into this IT room right here. Uh, so we're, we're not, we're just gonna get rid of something that, it works just fine. So we always need to cool these IT racks, which hundred, or, well, tens of thousands of dollars worth of equipment in those. So we need to try to keep those nice and cool. Um, we have, I have, uh, urbans are gonna be coming and replacing the exhaust fans in the, the junior high and the high school bathrooms. So I'd went up on the roof and found that they were not working. And I would say probably for quite some time. The motors were seized and I, and I, I couldn't tell you when they last worked. So we got them coming. They should be coming here pretty soon. Um, I was actually able to supply one of the fans that's actually out in the shop. Uh, so that kind of kept the cost down a little bit. But, uh, they will be coming and doing that hopefully really soon. I also had them replace the urinals in the high school boys locker room. Uh, been having some issues with that. So our summer home, extremely helpful this summer. And, uh, they essentially, almost all of them are done this week. Uh, so they'll be, it'll just be our, the full-time custodians from now on. And, uh, I think they all did a great job, you know, pulling all the classrooms out, putting them back together. Uh, doing all the little things that I asked them to do. So it's a good crew. We're, we're really nice. Uh, not just saying that because my daughter was.
Why does she get off now? She can go to next week and I'll start school.
Um, so we did just this, this week, or maybe it was the end of last week. We started the outdoor, uh, all the outdoor doors were redoing the access building. Uh, they just finally got all their stuff in, so they're, they just showed up and just started, uh, changing everything out. So hopefully it won't be too long before we can get all those changed. Otherwise, people might be using two badges to get in. So if you have, depends on where they get to first, so, yeah.
Beau told me that our old badges work on all the doors until everything's installed, though. We're not gonna have an issue where someone shows up and claims. He's also gonna wait to change the copiers over.
That's what I'm saying. So I know there's some conversation around the summer, people couldn't get in, concerned, et cetera, et cetera. Until everything's done, these badges will work and everybody will be given them at the same time.
I hope so.
Andemonium?
Calm down, calm down.
Um, I was just told today that I believe it's the swing set equipment will be showing up tomorrow.
What?
The what?
No entry.
I believe it's swing set.
Wow, that's crazy. That's the time of November.
Yeah, that's.
Might not be all of it, but I was definitely told a bunch of tile, it was for you. I'm just guessing, at least it's getting started.
I'm sure we'll be up for school.
I doubt it. I don't know. We'll see what, what shows up tomorrow. Um, does anyone have any other question?
There's a bid on your doors on E eight. I'll tell the board where that is.
So, um, kids had found a way to open that door when it was locked.
Where is E eight?
Uh, right down by my room, uh, kind of by, it's in the back.
Our door.
Yeah, by the ramp. Yeah, in between the two locker rooms that are right there.
Yep, at the bottom, bottom of the old high school steps.
Yep, definitely. So, uh, they've, they've found a way to open the door when it was locked. All right, holding really hard. So there's too much flex in the door with that much glass, it's a full glass door. Uh, so that's what the bid is in front of you. Uh, but a lot of times I use Liberty Doors, which they have one of the bids. Uh, doorsink came in quite a bit less and I had only set aside with Angela a certain amount of money. So we're actually over, I had guessed at the kind of, uh, but I would, I would say that doorsink would do just as good a job, so.
It's a thirty-five hundred dollar difference when you get through.
Wow.
And I sent the exact same specs both, so. Not sure how the price differs. It's like.
It's like nothing changed on the door. They just finally somebody tried it and it worked and the word spread.
Well, yeah, they, so they, it's not the one with the actual badge lock on it, it's the other one.
I get it.
And I actually tried to fix it and put another prong that goes to the bottom. Didn't fix it. Still do it.
I mean, on the one hand, you have to be encouraged that kids want to get in there to learn that badly. On the other hand. Oh, they left their cell phone. Yeah, that's wrong. Oh, okay. Well, I just, you know, I miss school.
All right.
I want him to go over that.
Sorry. No, it's fine. I was just gonna mention, um, last night I brought my boys in to shoot and we had to use the elementary gym because the volleyball nets were up. And I went into the girls restroom there across from the gym. And as soon as you start to walk in, you are hit with the swampiest, nastiest smell ever. I think that I looked around and there's some water seems to be standing in that drain, so I don't know.
Well, normally there's water in the drains.
The smell's coming from there.
Okay.
So I don't know, wasn't about to like look any further, but just.
So what were you at specifically?
Across from the gym.
Oh, the elementary gym?
Yeah, the gym.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll take care of it.
I figured I'd mention that. I don't know. I don't know.
Do you have automatic flushers in there?
It wasn't great, so.
Okay, why?
You know, I didn't, I didn't check in each stall. Seeing if it's coming there, you could see the water. I'm like, I don't know.
All right.
Check it out.
I'm sure you'd love to go check it out.
Send Kylie in first.
Yeah.
Well, you did say it was the girls restroom.
Yes, I only, I think you didn't spend a lot of time down there. So I thought I'd let someone know.
Spend more time in the girls restroom.
Now, kudos to Andy and his staff. Man, he's worked really hard this summer.
In our maintenance committee meeting, there was a discussion of a potential pipe issue like in the tunnel. And Jip was going to do some digging and look. Has that ever happened? Are you, are you wearing?
Oh, the sewer. Right. That was the manhole outside of it. So I had talked to him and he said that basically he didn't want to go through and design everything because it's going to be a really expensive project and then possibly not get it. He said, so he wanted me to go through an engineer to see what we could do about that.
But it's still not rectified.
It's, it's not a real problem yet.
Okay.
But it's on my radar. So.
When we get to that point.
Because it would be a really messy.
Again, I talk, we get to that point, we have to hire an engineer to come in and
design it something.
And then we take it off for bits is where we're at. It's a good question, Tom.
I just had one more quick thing. Sorry. Um, I also noticed, so our wonderful neighbor Wade over here with his overgrown yard. On our side of the fence, there's like a lot of weeds. I don't know if somebody can do something with them before our first home football game.
Are you talking in between the maintenance shop?
So in between the concession stand and his fence. So there's a fence there now to the south of the concession stand. There is a fence there now, but there's a lot of weeds growing up on our side of it. But I think everything just kind of finds its way through by the way it looks.
Right by the maintenance shop? Or are you talking further towards the concession stand? Yeah. So I actually had to go, we had part of the roof rip off just recently, a couple of weeks ago. And I had to go back there and trim everything on that part. There was, I didn't realize how much tree was growing over, you know? So I did that section and then I fixed the roof and I still need to do a little bit more for the next building. So yeah, it's also on my.
One of the southeast west.
Yeah, the, yeah, the east west one is what I was talking about.
Oh, the maintenance shop.
Not down that far.
Who's the blue for the concession stand? You know where it says beavers?
Yeah. So there's a bunch of weeds on ours.
Tom Mauer.
I thought he took care of that. So.
He sprayed weeds last week with compound. So I just don't know if they died yet, but I can't verify.
If it was last week, you wouldn't see it yet.
I know, but I don't know if he did that. Okay.
Well, we were back there Friday. We walked by there for the baseball, to the cafeteria for the baseball.
Okay.
Bigwood. So that's just when I had seen it. I couldn't, I guess, I didn't stop and look, but I could just see it. It's like, ugh, I didn't want to. He was my old neighbor. So.
Maybe ask Tom if he sprayed it or just weed it off. Yeah. No, like Tom and I just missed it about that last week too, when we went around the track.
Behind my house.
All part accessible.
You're going to rip it out from the front of your house. From the front of your house, everything's ripped out.
Anyway, the side of the driveways, as far as the parking lot, is just full back there. So just, why are you still in it? Just because it looked, the painting looks so nice, but then there's weeds.
There was a crack.
That's what I told him too. So hopefully I notice I'm driving over him a couple of times.
Well, this winter with the blade, he'll spray it off.
Are there any other questions for Andy while you got him?
Thank you.
Did you use door zinc for our work? You've been fine?
I've used them for doing some maintenance on our doors. Yeah.
It's probably helped this summer.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Andy.
All right. No recognition? Well, that kind of was. Public forum and whatever. All right, Angela, business financial function, please.
Upload five are the taxation financials. And with it being the first month of the fiscal year, I guess I'd like to direct your attention more to the budget amounts. And those can change throughout the year and I will make sure that you are aware of that. But to just give you an idea, um, general fund last year, our expenditures, our budgeted expenditures over revenue was 600, or excuse me, not 600, that would be scary. 365,000. This year we're, um, almost at 535,000 expenditures over revenue. But I want you to keep in mind that when we went into negotiations, we left out a teacher that, that new teacher position. We did not include that. So think about that and all the benefits. So that wasn't in there. And then also every year we have that second act teacher. The amount of money that Townsend gives us is less and we have to pick up the rest of that. Okay? And so I just wanted to bring that to your, to your attention. Otherwise, in the other funds, I really don't have anything specific to, to point out unless you have any questions about the budgeted amount. Um, I will say fund 33 are, um, are, are saved dollars. I do not get an exact final number until the end of this month is what I'm being told from the Department of Management. So what I did was I just took our district, our district cost per pupil times our certified enrollment from last year. So that will give us a pretty close number. So that is something that more than likely will change whenever I get that exact number. Okay. Then, um, the next upload is, uh, back up here. Is 05A. I, this is totally my fault. I don't like to be under the gun for anything and sometimes I jump the gun. So the June 30th taxation funds. I had more entries that I did after I ran the balance sheet. So I have uploaded into, um, July's meeting and then showed you here the changes. The reason why fund 10, 33 and 40 changed is I always do the HVAC transfers and those involve fund 10 and 33. I'd done those after I did the balance sheet. And then at the end of the fiscal year, I always have to zero out the insurance payables. And if you look at the one that I presented at the June or July board meeting versus this one, it was $48,505. That should not have been, been there. I did an adjustment after that to zero that out. So that affected that as well. And then the third thing that affected it was there was, uh, for the series 2020, we had a 600 agent fee. I had done that after, again, I ran the balance sheet. So this one is revised and it is correct. So that is my fault. After that, do I have any, do you have any questions for me on that? Sorry. If not, upload six is, um, the new ISP. And our spending, our total spending authority for this fiscal year is 460,632. And then you can see, um, our expenditures, uh, which July is always, um, a higher month because everything came in for the teachers when we paid, here's my bills. We paid, we paid a lot of bills. So, um, that 16, seven is obviously all the orders that the teachers placed over the summer. Everything has come in and, uh, we are paying those bills. Then I am really just going to skip down to, um, the board bills. Well, I guess, uh, the only negative in our, uh, enterprise fund is for sheep. Again, that'll resolve itself.
I think it was like a whole eighty dollars or something for a poker.
It wasn't. Yeah, it's not very much. So otherwise, with it being the first month of the fiscal year, um, there's, there's really nothing that I guess I, I want to point out. So I would like to jump to the board bills, upload 15. And then, um, just mainly point out a maintenance credit card, central office credit card. We have 27 pages of bills in the board report. And the most of it is the credit card. Most of it is that central office getting all the supplies and.
I have a question on that bill. So I mean, obviously like we paid a rent quite a bit for, is that open enrollment? Is that what that is or what's? So well, then the two that really threw me off, like Bettendorf we paid and there's like a Marion or some, I mean, there's some other like.
Those are kids that are tuitioned out. We have some, some kids tuitioned out, one up to Marion. Johnston is another one. Yeah. Those are all the special ed billings. Those are one of the last things that comes through. Because that tuition and billing is due in June.
So when you say they're tuitioned out, what does that mean? I'm sorry. I don't.
They are our resident students. They live here.
But they open enroll.
They're, yes. They're specialized students that go somewhere else, you know, because we don't have the.
Services.
Facility area.
I understand. So that's how that is. We can't, we can't beat 30.
Yes.
Understood.
So when you see those, those other districts and we're paying them, the majority of it's for the special.
So why do we pay your rent so much for special ed?
Because we have, um, students who live here.
But they're open enroll.
But are open enrolled there and they're special ed students.
Got it. Okay.
So there was just page after page of, uh, the credit card for the central office.
There was like seven of those.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just for the record of none of many, I had zero of that.
Which I don't think they all add up very much if I wrote correctly. Like for as many as there were, I couldn't believe it wasn't bigger.
Um, and our, there was a lot of tech ISP, um, that, you know, all our license renewals beginning of the year, um, gets, comes in. This is the time, all the fire extinguishers, just all those beginning of the year expenses.
Budgeted.
Yeah. And then the only other thing I would direct your attention to is we missed when I originally, um, selected all my invoices to pay, we missed TriCity Electric and that bill was due today. So that's why, um, 15A, there's that TriCity Electric bill for 17,000. It just didn't get lumped in with, with the original batch. We missed that one.
And that was the move, if I were out of the old ag building and into the cabinet in the, or the new library, elementary library, I believe is where it is. Correct? That's what that.
I'm 99% sure, but I don't want to say, yeah, 100%.
Oh my gosh, we got another bill.
You proved that not that long ago and I believe that was the number for, for what that was.
We had another bill today.
And TriCity Electric up here for a couple of things. So I'm.
I understand that. I get it.
All right. Otherwise, unless you have any other questions, I, those are the things I wanted to point out at least.
I'll have to do it first.
Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, margin carries. Thank you as always, Angela.
Yeah.
All right. Administrator reports, Mr. Meyer. Welcome, welcome.
So I, I feel like tomorrow's a big day. You know, every year we have new staff that come in and I feel tomorrow's our like opening salvo with all of our new staff. You know, it's kind of like the recruiting class of 2023. You know, really. And I feel like we're in a very different position maybe than we have in the past because of the six new people we have been coming in the district. Four of them all have experience. So, uh, Mr. Hewitt and model teachers at the high school and Mrs. Place and model teacher at the elementary. Be starting ingraining them, I guess, you know, and so I, I love the, the new energy that new people bring. I'm super excited. You know, Sarah Eisenstein comes to us with a lot of experience counseling at Lone Tree. I think she'll connect well, you know, with, uh, you know, Kate Weekly. So she's really our only new staff, the elementary. Erica Hopkins is, took the transfer down to sixth grade. Think it'll be a little bit of an adjustment for her. High school kids and the, you heard that autonomy that they have, now they're going to be like, here, I need this and, and you know, recess time kind of stuff. And I, I think that'll be a little bit of a, I don't think it'll scare her. It'll just be different. I mean, it's just, it's just a good different. So I, I, I'm excited. Tomorrow really excites me for the first day of school because those new people come and they're, they're excited. They want to be here. They're excited to be here. Uh, and I really feel like it gives them a leg up when we all sit together and all the staff are here. And Mrs. O'Donnell or myself say something and they're like, I know what you're talking about. So, um, any other questions about my report there? We've got open house coming up. I, you know, I think that just feeds right into all that new excitement stuff. So we've kind of done that a little bit different over the years. COVID kind of changed that. Now that, that has functioned a little bit. The K3 kids are coming to school, meeting the teacher here and then four, six has that kind of in-person visit. So. Any other questions?
Thank you for the list. I, I really enjoyed the elementary school staff list. That's.
Well, there is an error on there. Somebody had a surprise wedding.
Ah, yeah.
So I didn't, I didn't quite have, I didn't know anything about this. I mean, I'm not sure why I was left out of the loop on that. But, uh, yeah, so Grace McCombs is now Grace Dean. So kind of a cool little mountain ceremony.
Hey, great. All right. No, thank you, Mr. Meyer. We will move on, Mrs. O'Donnell.
Okay.
Please.
For, um, my report, I kind of put a lot in there. What I really want to talk to you about is, um, our new staff as well, who starts tomorrow. So, um, we have Robert Eisenstein has transferred to the high school. So he'll be down here. Um, and then we have Amy Scoop in math and comes with a lot of experience. Justin Ozier, uh, experience in science. Kirsten Jurgerson, one of our own, has come back to teach upper level math. And I think she's going to be a rock star. She just seems amazing already. Andrea LaPage is, uh, first, she has one year of teaching under her belt and has a master's in chemistry. And so I'm really excited to have, um, girls, you know, uh, who's, she's really excited to get more, just, you know, more younger people involved in science. Our, our Spanish teacher, and that's the one that's been, we've been working hard on. So, um, our candidate for Spanish, um, is not a citizen of the United States. So I've been working with immigration and Department of Labor since then. Um, we did finally get approved by the Department of Labor. Our candidate took the practice test, which is that, uh, test, they don't really, they don't require teachers anymore to take it, but a foreign teacher must. She felt she did well. We're still waiting on our results. Once she gets her results, then we, um, will give all of our documentation to the Iowa Department of Ed and they should issue her a license. It's been, um, it's been interesting. Uh, I'm really excited. She's coming tomorrow, even though she doesn't have a contract yet or anything, but she's wearing her bill and wants to get going. And, um, and then.
She did, she did teach English. She, in Mexico and is going to come.
Come teach Spanish.
Spanish in America.
And she has a degree in both to teach Spanish or English. So it works. Yeah. Great. And then, um, Sarah Schneffer was hired as the MCC Career and College Writingness Counselor. So we'll have that position filled again and she's already met with me. And then we also have, um, Unity Point in the past had offered a lot of our services, um, like health. If we had a student charged with vaping, um, they could take a, um, like a class, a diversion class with some of them in Unity Point. Emily, and I'm not going to pronounce her name right, so I'm not even going to say her name, but she's with Unity Point. She actually taught biology at Muscatine. She's a licensed teacher. So she is coming in and I'm hoping to partner her with, um, Mr. Patterson and, um, Miss Weekly and even, um, Mrs. Hardaway Law to come in for our health classes. They're going to be able to bring a lot of things to the table. Um, she's going to train us on, we have an. Um, she's gonna train us on, we have Narcan here and um Todd, myself, Joe, Jamie, you might as well. And we're gonna get, um, they're gonna come in and teach us how to administer that. Um, so I'm really excited that we have now that person from Unity Point. Um, and they, she's assembling a team as well. She'll be here on open house night with a booth and then I'm gonna introduce her as we come in, but you may see uh someone from their uh. Their firm here helping kids and. I just think that we're kind of uh partnering and growing so we can get that second, that high school. Um, component like Kate said, into the classrooms. Um, Emily and Sarah both will be going into the life skills classes. Sarah will be having a class of her own of kids that are, that uh college ready class. And then um, and since Emily's a licensed teacher, she can, you know, help out and so with those things too, so. We're working at adding now that component of career and college readiness and having those discussions nine through twelve. So um that's, that's kind of an arm and piece, so I think those are gonna come together this year.
Alright, okay. Any questions? Thanks, sounds great, thank you, alright. Alright, action.
Yeah, let's rock and roll.
Alright, we set agenda number one.
Tyler Hetzer took a job up in Cedar Rapids and uh. He's had a lot of coaching for us.
Yeah.
So we've got some positions to fill here. Uh, this fall. So anyway, that's the only thing under the resignations piece. Um, I will say this, in the last, gosh, I don't know how many years. We've been very blessed, where we haven't had any teaching resignations in the month of July or early August. So we've been very fortunate, I mean, this is one of the first summers that I can remember in the recent future where we're not scrambling. Of course, we want to get the Spanish thing filled, but that's gonna work.
Right.
I know that's gonna work. Just a paperwork trail, so anyway, that's it under.
Backup plan if that doesn't work? Not really?
Yes, yes, you know, you never plan to fail, but you, you know, you can fail the plan. We got options in terms of. We got our friends next door in Durant. And when we say fail, let's say, for example, she can't get her license, you're a little, a few days.
We do have a backup plan, we have two backup plans if needed.
Why don't you, you wanna?
Yeah, uh, last year, when we were having trouble um finding candidates for our position, Mr. Dietrich and I sat down and kind of came up with. Um, some plans of how we could incorporate and use their staff to help us out. That's Plan B, I would say, and C is uh we can, there is online Spanish, I don't want. I, I just don't feel like that is, is powerful, but, but there are um, there are. Curriculum, you know, online curriculum out there that we could use, but um.
Well, certainly, I think we're making the right decision with the candidate we have, and I hope that it works and.
Third option, which I lean toward if we're there, I mean, we're talking hypotheticals, of course. Is you hire a sub to come in, the state doesn't like you, just start with a sub, I understand that, but we're in different times than we've been in the past. Then she can lead the class, but you got a licensed sub in there covering the class and she's teaching.
Ah, sure.
That's what I see happening.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because we know it's short term, if it's for a semester issue, different story.
Understood.
Right? So, that's what we don't have to use that, those two options, but the last option is the online version, especially since that's a short term.
I'll make a motion to accept consent agenda number one, so.
Although, favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those motion carries, consent agenda number two.
Ironically, it's the shorter version of board policy.
Oh, yes, yes, just a normal board policy. Yes, nothing.
I'll take any questions you have, there's a lot in there and it's interesting because it's very pertinent in the times we live in. Um, talk about religion, academic freedom, controversial issues, et cetera. There's been a lot come down this summer from the state. Um, in different areas or whatnot, and to be honest with you, the state hasn't even given us specific guidance on things. Um, yet, so to be honest with you, we're kind of flying the plane without clear, clear manual on some of this stuff. But we're trying to use common sense and do the best we can, if there's issues, we address it and we'll keep working with the Department of Ed, getting there. So I have nothing to tweak under consent agenda number two, when you see consent agenda number three.
Different.
We'll talk about that.
Motion to go for consent agenda number two?
Although, favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those motion carries, alright, first three are normal.
When have you been on the board for twenty two or twenty three years, you ever seen thirty six of them under consent agenda before?
That's crazy.
No.
Alright.
Yeah.
First two I'll go over, actually three. Our substitute teacher pay rate, we want to increase that by five dollars a day, Lana did a survey and that would put us at the average in the area. To go to a hundred and thirty dollars a day, I think we need to keep looking at this yearly to make sure we're within the B, so I recommend that. Number two, we do this every year, our Rock Belly Physical Therapy, I believe we have an athletic trainer at our varsity events. I think that's been wonderful. Hey, the biggest thing is just um concussion protocol.
Yep.
You know, it takes out of the coaches when they're trying to coach the game versus, hey, how you feeling, then run through that. Uh, number three is our um bus and van mileage rates, those are set by the IRS. Like on the van rates, you can see we asked if we put it in half, that's what gets charged back to the activities departments when they use vans for different things or whatnot. One of the things we do in Wilton, not every place does this, we don't charge the athletics, that's where it comes from ninety nine percent of the time. The driver, we just charge them a fee for mileage on the vehicle. So we try to help out, I mean, that, that goes back to part of my time when athletics was really a pinch financially. I'm okay with that still, but anyway, that's where we have to know those rates. The other time we'd ever use that rate, let's say Mr. Meyer's going to a conference, we always have our people take a school vehicle, let's say everything's hot. And he drives his car to the lane back or Joe, whoever, school employee, and we use this rate that's established. So questions on those three? Alright. On policies three through thirty six.
Question number one for you.
Yes, go.
One thirty enough, will that get us subs? I mean, I'm not saying like I want to give the farm away, but I also don't want.
Is it comparable to?
Yeah, it, it, it's the average, I think it's very comparable and I don't think that's gonna be the difference maker of someone taking a job and will not. So no, that's a great question.
I mean, I, I would like us to be first choice, so whatever that.
I guess to Tommy's point, if it's in all struggle, it's top part more.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, if, if you're, if we're having an issue where it's not working, can we readdress it?
Absolutely, it's month to month, this is like a teaching contract per se, where hey, we're locked in for twelve months.
I think it's an issue everywhere, though, and I don't know if it's a money thing as much as it's a, available, there's just not a people thing. You know, when you used to have thirty or forty people on a list and now you've got four or five, they can be a little more selective and I'm not gonna say it's money, but. You know, they might like to go to Mrs. Jones's room. Because they know that the kid, that's a good group of kids, that's what I'm gonna take today, cause you know, the PE class the other time was, they were kind of jerks, so I don't really want to take.
Still comes down to your school and the quality of your school, I believe, at the end of the day.
Correct.
And locality, you know, but most of our sub schools are local. You know, we don't draw many, do we draw anybody from Iowa City?
I don't think we do.
You know what I'm saying?
But for a hundred and thirty dollars, it'd be really hard to justify.
That's my point, you know, so.
But again, thirty years ago, you did do that because there were, there were, there were a lot more people that wanted in to education jobs wise that were willing to sub and drive from Iowa City and do that. Whereas now, those people have found jobs.
And as of last year, we've actually talked with our teachers about. Make it easier on subs.
Yes.
You shouldn't have to search for anything.
That has helped too.
Everything there, make it easier, so that they'll want to say yes.
I think it's hard to sub, and I, and I'll be quite honest, this thing has made it so much harder. Especially in the elementary, you know, you bring a sub and you're like, okay, log into this account, our computers are quite locked down.
Oh.
It's hard for you to do that, it's just, it's, it's just gotten a little bit harder, I think, for you, so. High school, I think, can get away with it a little bit more, cause Google, Google classroom is easy for them to, you know, teachers will, you know, throw stuff out there for the kids to do. And that's, that's a little harder to do, you know, in, in an elementary classroom.
But yeah, but then we have to give them a device and then they need passwords and then.
Yeah, then you gotta, yep, then you have to have devices and passwords.
Yeah.
I get it.
Kids, yeah, it is.
I had to be the guy that did subbing for when anybody was gone and everything was on a website, this and a website, that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I forgot to update the password sheet, now you can't.
Just trying to survive.
Now you don't know, yeah.
I, I, it's very difficult, and that's owners, I bring it up, I mean, I'm, I'm not a.
Tommy, that's a valid point and I.
I just want to know if it's not.
And if there's anything that we feel that we need to adjust at mid-year, we will come to you and I appreciate that support of knowing that.
It's tough.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Okay.
Any other on those first three? Because when we get these next ones, I'm not gonna go through them one by one, I'm gonna be honest with you. I can't. But I will answer any questions specifically on these, basically what we've had to do over the last month. And we've talked, we've, we've had administrative meetings just about this. And Lana's been involved, Joy's been involved. The admin teams, Maria and Joe, Maria Brown, his counterpart next door. Of just putting together all of the new updates legislatively, they're basically law. So it's not like we can tweak some of these things, we just gotta go into all of our policies and make sure they're up to code. So that's what these readings are for.
Okay.
It's not like we're doing something special in Wilton, we're saying, hey, we want to teach atomic energy and this, no. This is what the state's telling us we have to have in our policies to be legal.
Cause it is Iowa code.
Exactly, and whether you approve it or not.
Which is typical.
I'm gonna be honest with you, it's still the law.
Yeah, right.
And mostly it's just a review of something that's already standing.
Right, yes, right.
Just the, kind of legislative common sense. It's already been in place for a while.
Yeah, basically.
Yes, yes.
Like the whole book thing, it's, there's always been a selection.
Yeah.
And we've always.
Big consideration.
Yes.
And we've always been thoughtful about what we have.
And we've always, yes.
The only difference is you can't have a student on it.
Oh.
And like the calendar one, basically a district can use five days of instruction with uh online. You know, which professionally, I'm not in favor if you have a snow day, because the equity of a kindergartner versus senior. We're here to teach kids, we're not here just to get through a day so we can have a longer summer, I mean, that's why we're here. So unless we're in a really special situation, I don't see us using online days to make up some days. I mean, that's a board decision, but.
I, I think we all saw, I mean, I, I will give our community credit that I thought our district went above and beyond a lot of our neighboring districts. To try to make the most of a unique scenario. But I don't, I think anybody involved will tell you that it wasn't overly effective.
No. I don't think all that work you're gonna have to put in to do it, and you're not gonna get the results that you're hoping for anyways, so.
So anyway, that's just an example of something in there, they're just tweaks to the language pieces, but.
And they're already, we already have them in, are there new ones that we had to add?
Well, I'll only give you an example like the student disclosure of identity, you know, there's been a lot of talk on if a student. From a gender perspective, wants to go from one name to the other, the parents need to sign off on that. So that's new, I mean, but that's only if it assigns or assumes a different gender. As Matt Harvard said, we're not going crazy if Ronald wanted to be Ron.
No, you're right.
Or Matthew, but if Matthew wants to be Gracie.
Then.
Now we gotta.
And.
Get the parents.
Which is like other things, you need, kids just can't say today, you gotta call me this.
Yeah.
It has to be more of a parent, they have to kind of.
They have to, they have to agree.
That, right, you can't just say.
Well, there's been some issues in some districts where school districts, quite honestly, in my opinion. Incorrectly, if there's a twelve year old that wants to have some type of identity change, the parents need to be involved, and some districts weren't doing that.
Correct.
Okay?
Yeah.
And we're just taking it upon them and that child, and so this just basically puts it in the law. So that's, I'm just giving you another example of something that's an update. Were there any other specific questions you have? And you remember, it goes through thirty six, and Joy, some of these are just forms too, you know, they're like the forms and those things, so.
To do, it's the, right.
Release forms, prescription, where we can give Narcan or whatnot. And you'll see this again in September, it takes two readings on all these.
If Narcan is, if trained, can anybody administer that, that?
Once we're trained, yeah.
Should be a fairly easy training to maybe expand out in time.
I think so.
Give a shot.
Uh huh. But I, but I've never done it, I've never given a shot to anybody, anything.
I did hear that there was an incident not far from Wilton where this, the um. Staff had to give four shots of Narcan and then the person was ODing on um. So make sure you just.
The school resource officers have already had it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just, timing is everything, and so if we can get more people trained, I, I'm, yeah, I'm, I want everybody to try it.
Correct.
Double row.
Absolutely, no, that's the goal, that's the end goal. So.
It's unfortunate reality, that's a lifesaver.
No, I, I, you're right, Row, but gosh.
Sorry, is there a change in graduation requirements? Is that updated in any way?
The reason that, no, um, basically what the state said is you don't have to require financial literacy anymore. Okay, we chose to keep it in there. We still have life skills in there.
I agree.
Our policy matches what the state minimums are, but we go above that.
Okay.
So that's, but that's a good question, that's what changed at the state level. But interesting, just a handful of years ago, they said you have to do financial literacy, now they've taken out.
And now we got seniors that can't sign that check.
You know, so we still think that's important.
And that's, and that's adult, no, it occurs now, so.
We actually were practicing that last night. My children. And I showed them how I do it, they said that's not a signature, like scribbles.
You should be able to read it.
Any other questions on consent agenda number three?
Yeah, I think we're good.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda number three.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those motion carries, thank you, alright, individual, bids for replacement in the storage store.
Yeah, I brought that up with Andy here, cause I wanted you to know where it was at and what was going on, but yeah. I, I also echo this recommendation of doorsank at eleven thousand three sixty nine.
Perfect. Although, in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those motion carries, alright, information.
Well, before we get to that, you're going to see, and this, this is an informational item too. But I, I think we need to have the board approve it and I will have it back on the agenda in September. Do you remember one of the changes that our auditor recommended? Home law of like having the board approve um fundraisers or whatnot, Mr. Hetzer has two of them on there. I emailed him today and I asked him, I said, well, I know we have choir fundraiser, I know we've got Ag fundraisers. I go, can you get a list of those together and we can take all this back in front of the board in September? I realize there maybe wants to come up.
I remember having the conversation, I remember discussing, but I remember the why, why did we need them to get approved, I mean, what was?
That's the state rule and we weren't following it.
Ah, check.
They were getting approved through Tyler, or not Ryan, I mean.
Yeah, and us and the administration, we knew what they were doing, but.
That one has to be the one.
They're, and they're trying to do it all on the front end, like at the beginning of each year.
Yep.
Good news, better for worse, a lot of them are repetitive carryovers, okay, so we can nail probably eighty percent of them, but if something comes up or there's a fundraiser.
And like on the, on the rough estimate, like, I mean, there's no accountability to whomever's, like. Say they say they're gonna make whatever, seven to ten thousand dollars, it comes in at six grand, I mean, there's no, there's no penalties.
No, I called me today and we had that discussion and I said, when you have your coaches meeting, I don't want that to be something that is set in stone. It's just to give an estimate, an idea. Um, then, then the central office knows what to maybe expect or, you know. He used the example that he bought, got some football tickets last year and it ended up not coming about. And so I said, no, we're not gonna hold you to anything. Um, and then the other thing that he wanted to know and I was going to ask you as well, he can set up this, this document. To come to each of you, so anytime a fundraiser does come up, you have to, that's like, you can be made aware of. Um, because he said sometimes somebody may come across something and they want to start it in, in two weeks. He said, do we have to wait till the next board meeting? And I said, absolutely not.
As long as they get our approval administratively, we oversee it, we share the information with the board. That's what we've been doing, now you just have access to that on a working Google spreadsheet that'll be live.
I, I think it's definitely overkill, just that it's even required, but.
There are some horror stories out there.
I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm sure, I'm sure.
There's a lot of missing.
Yes, there is, and it's just to cover us.
Understood.
So, anyway, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Does that sound okay?
So, this is for, this is informational, what you gave us right now.
Right, but if we can have Ryan put it in a Google Doc, like an Excel spreadsheet. Yeah, and we get all those other ones in.
Okay.
Rob, I wanted to say something.
If there's any fundraisers that require a big cash outlay to get started, it'd be worth just noting that, I guess. Like, I don't know with the cards, how they.
Oh, yeah.
If they got to shell out three grand just to get them printed up, I didn't think.
The company does it, brings them, kids sell them, then they get a portion of it.
I don't know if any, we have to put.
But say you were selling meats instead of buying.
Maybe it was something, and you had to buy the meat ahead of time, and then.
But if we did, I think that'd be fair to say to the board, hey, this is going to cost us twenty-five hundred, and potential's making ten grand, but we got to put down twenty-five.
Yeah, but I'm not saying we need to, we're that even, I just, that'd be good to call out if it's one of those rare kind of deals.
So, if you look at upload fifty-five, that's how it's going to come across to you.
Yes.
That's the document itself, so that's what you will see.
So, I just wanted to bring that up, so if you saw, why didn't we approve?
Oh, and I forgot about it, but yeah.
All right. I have a couple informational items. You can see the hiring's there with the cheer coach and the assistant cross-country. I did want to mention, I have four bullets here, five bullets to look at. I did speak with Terry Dinklin, okay, about what we talked about as far as spending down money that's in that account, a lot of it's COVID-related. She has an audit this year in November, and she has some ideas of how we can spend that down, and she's going to run by the auditor. And once that meeting takes place in November, I asked her to come to the board, most likely to work session, just say, hey, here's what the auditor told me, here's our options, here's what I'm pursuing, what do you, you know, do you have any suggestions on that? So, did talk to Terry about that. We're having a welcome back luncheon for the new teachers, well, the chamber puts it on, so you're invited to come if you're available. It's on Thursday, August seventeenth, eleven-thirty down in the cafeteria.
We just got it today.
Okay, well, I.
Yep, Joy forwarded, thank you, Joy.
I have not heard anything back from the city in terms of the agreement with the pool.
I was wondering.
So, I have not heard anything, so the ball's in their court.
Yeah.
I'm getting that rolling, what we discussed in July.
Talk about or discuss it either in the minutes of this.
I just wanted to keep you posted.
You did have the conversation, though, with our mayor.
Correct.
Yes, I did. And his comment was that the city administrator was going to take care of getting that drafted and getting, so I may.
Well, they were using their counsel. Sometimes the old counsel.
Can take a while.
But anyway, just FYI, I wanted to keep you in the loop, I have not heard anything back from that.
Yes.
The first home football game is against West Liberty on Friday, September first.
Yes.
We usually do the back-to-school tailgate, if you don't know, I said that, you want me to reach out to Terry? I think it's a great.
Yep, I'll do the email.
You want to?
I'll do my email and send it to the offices and whatever, and.
And I'll shut, like I said, I'll talk to Terry and see.
Think of by running the concession stand for the JV game that day, so.
September first.
And just send them to you out there, is that what you're saying?
Example.
Just text your, or somebody. DoorDash it.
I always prefer Jamie.
There you go. Jamie, good thinking.
Good idea.
Hey, and the other guy I watched out there.
There's a fundraiser, get it off the box.
All right.
Last thing I wanted to mention, well, two things. Board election's November seventh. Okay, that's three months from now, less than. So, those of you who are running, you can get your paperwork from Joy in September.
No.
When?
First day they can pick up is August twentieth, which is a really good day.
Oh, first day.
Yes, July.
But it's due in Sep.
And they need to be turned in by five o'clock on September twenty-first.
Okay. So, FYI, that's a September window.
Five o'clock that night.
FYI, just want to pass that along, because that's going to be here before we know it. So, I wanted to share that. And we have a work session scheduled, the fourth Wednesday is the first day of school. Can we move that tentatively, if you're okay with it, to Wednesday, August thirtieth at five o'clock? And let's see where we're at. If there's nothing major in the next couple of weeks, let's see where we're at. But let's, can we tentatively plan for five o'clock on the thirtieth? We just know we're not meeting on the twenty-third?
Yes, please.
First day of school's kind of crazy, so it's a win for all of us. That's okay.
What's for me?
Are there any other questions? And you can see our regular meeting in September, and I'll just end by saying this, I've started my thirtieth year in this career of education, not necessarily superintendent. But, you know what? I'm as excited today as I've been in any other year. There's just something about when you see the kids in the community. I miss seeing them every day in school, and they are excited and ready to get back. And I see the kids in the weight room, and, you know, the football players and the volleyball kids down there, and I know cross-country's cranking up. It's just, that's one of the joys of being in education, is you get a fresh start every year. And I'm excited right now. It'll be fun, a lot of fun.
Yay.
Yeah.
All right.
So, anyway, I just wanted to share that. There's just, there's an excitement that you can't.
Well, I was always ready for school to be done, but I was always ready to start and fall. I mean, as a student and also as working, as associate in the office, I mean, it's just.
We're lucky, I shouldn't say lucky, we're fortunate in that regard, that we get a starting and a stop. Not every career has that, it just continually runs.
So, with that, an invitation, entertain a motion for adjournment, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Oh, this motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Very good.
Good night, Joyce.